So certified.
So certified.
So certified.
So certified.
So certified.
So certified.
Okay. If you would, join us in a moment of silence and then we will stand for the pledge of allegiance to be led by our vice chair, Ms. Moore, Ms. Whittington. I'll get straight. Okay, so have a moment of silence. Okay, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we are ready to move on with motions.
I make a motion to approve items A, B, and C of the consent agenda.
Is there a second to approve the consent agenda?
I'll say.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to approve the SIG Bank request from employee, excuse me, D two for 15 days.
Is it? Do you second? Ms. Moyer, okay. There has been a motion second to approve the SIG League Bank request. All in favor, please say aye.
I make a motion to approve home instruction for those families who submitted requests for the 2020, 2021 school year, pending receipt of proper paperwork.
Is there a second?
Oh, we're gonna keep that up this year. I'll second it. We gotta make some second stuff on my name.
By Mr. Woodard to approve home instruction intent request. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And we move to the part of our agenda for recognition and instructional focus. And our employee spotlight for this month goes to our maintenance department. And we can't tell you all how much we appreciate you all. I noticed even when I came, it was snowing Sunday morning, by Sunday afternoon, many of our school lots had already been scraped and worked on, and that is due to you all putting in the extra effort and extra time to make it safe for our employees and staff to return to school for virtual instruction, or in the case sometimes of everyone there in person. But, and I know from being a principal for years, anytime anything happened, the first number we called was maintenance. And David, or who might be there at the time, recently yours, David, and say, David, I've got this, this, and this, I need help, and someone would be there within five minutes. And can't tell you how much that means, even to the point of capturing a spider sometimes. It was a black widow, though. So we can't tell you all how much we do appreciate the maintenance department. And I think some of the rest of you have something to add.
Just thank you very much. We couldn't do this school system without you. We couldn't, we couldn't keep it open.
You know, our schools are older, but they look good. They always are clean and sparkly. You all do an exceptional job. I don't think people realize the amount of work you actually put in, and I know this year has been exceptionally challenging because of the safety protocol that we've had to go by. You have worked even harder than you usually do, and that's hard to even get your head around, but you're greatly appreciated and thank you. Doesn't even seem to do justice for our appreciation for you all. Thank you.
I agree with Ms. Moyer. I'm always proud when people from other divisions come and our facilities look as good as they do, and it's noticed, it's noticed. We may not have the newest ones, but we always manage to have the best looking, or sometimes even the best ones. So thank y'all.
I too would like to say thank you for, excuse me, for all the hard work, all that you do to keep our school buildings, our aging buildings up to par. I know it's a tough job, but I want you to know that you are truly appreciated for everything you do.
And in appreciation of your dedication and outstanding performance and lasting contribution to Tassau County Public Schools, we would like for you all to come as we call your names, and if you would stay up here, and we're gonna get a picture of our spotlight employees for this month. Okay? Mr. Beavers? Followed by the one who keeps him in line, Judy Starling. She here?
Yeah.
Judy here?
I can't either.
I have to get her for that. Lee Eastridge? I'm too many leading, Pat. Lena here?
Hello.
Eugene Parkhurst?
Eugene.
Good. Tell Mr. Lee I'm disappointed he wasn't here.
I don't want to be, but I haven't been.
Barry Chanel? Barry didn't come. Gary Hess? Did he come either? Wendell Seals? Is it Stephen or Stefan?
It's Stephen.
Okay. I thought it was, but then I thought, well, maybe I'm wrong. Christopher Tony? Mr. Chris, what we do down here on these weekly runs? Bill Barrett? Bill didn't come?
He failed.
Oh, no. I hate that. Vincent Sweeney? And John Tibbs? Oh. I know. Okay, you all were kind of...
Four bitches out there. I see you refreshing up in here.
I'm good.
They are acting.
Why are they not... He's sexy before he's got a plan. Oh, it's hot now.
One, two, three. Thank you so much. Hand me that.
I bring that time.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for giving your time and coming tonight and giving us a chance to say thank you. Hey, Dr. Stacy?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, member of the board. It's my honor this evening to pronounce School Board Appreciation Month, and I would like to read a proclamation from the governor, but also a short statement. The month of February marks the annual observance of School Board Appreciation Month, a time to salute the work of school board members and celebrate public education. The theme of this year's celebration, 115 years of providing leadership, advocacy, and support, not necessarily this board, not 115 years.
Right.
Reflects the partnership of the Virginia School Boards Association with local school board members as they serve the local divisions and advocate for public education with local, state, and federal leaders on behalf of all students. School Board Appreciation Month is the time to recognize and celebrate the accomplishments of our trusted elected officials. Board members of Tassau County Public Schools must develop policies and make tough decisions on complex educational and social issues impacting the entire community. They bear the responsibility of an annual budget of over $67 million, 5,300 students, 839 employees, and 14 schools. School board members statewide make decisions that affect 1.5 million Virginia children and more than $3 billion. They preserve the core of our democracy, which is public education. The years of service of the Tassau County School Board members are as follows. Mr. Eric Robinson has one year, he is beginning his second year. Ms. Irene Mullins has three years, she's beginning her fourth. Ms. Donna Whittington has five years, she's beginning her sixth. And Chris Moyer has seven years, beginning her eighth. Mr. David Woodard has 13 years, beginning his 14th. And I would like to read the proclamation from the governor, and then I'd ask all of you to come to the center so we can take another picture. School Board Appreciation Month, whereas the education of Virginia's school-aged children is the foundation, excuse me, I did read the proclamation, didn't I? I'm sorry, you should already have the certificate, that's my mess up there, I apologize. Each school board member should have a certificate and a card, and again, on behalf of myself and my staff, we appreciate you. And I know that being a school board member is tough. I think this year, the past, since March anyway, is probably tougher than it has been. So we know that you are under the same kind of stresses that we are, and you put the work in, you support your community, you talk to your community at all hours of the day and night, you've all been open, and so I appreciate your responsiveness to the community needs, to the students' needs, and to our needs as employees, too. So I applaud you for your efforts, and I thank you for your support. If we would, we'll come out here and take a picture.
I'm not getting it from me, too. Thank you.
Oh, do, Ms. Bailey, they have the certificates?
Yes.
If, do you want?
Yeah.
If she...
I managed to lose mine already. I managed to lose mine already.
There.
Okay. All right, we are now to the time of our hearing of citizens, citizens?
No, ma'am, we should have career and technical education.
Oh, I'm sorry. Gotta hit myself. Career and technical education, Ms. Beavers.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, school board members, Dr. Stacy and Ms. Hill. Tonight, I'd like to give you an update on career and technical education in Tassau County Schools. I would say that in the last year, since March 13th, career and technical education, teachers have definitely had to stand up to a very big challenge. Virtual education is something that's new to all of our teachers, but it's very, very difficult in career and technical education because that is very much a hands-on, project-based educational curriculum, and our teachers have done a tremendous job stepping up and working with their students. Ms. Good, could I get you to take that back to the beginning of the presentation? Tonight, we do want to take a quick peek into CTE and just let you know where we are. As I began preparing this presentation, I always try to go back and look at last year, what we've done in the last year and where we are this year, and I'm not gonna lie, I was a little concerned because I thought, you know, everything has changed tremendously. But it was also a pleasant check-in to look to see exactly what we have done, and so that you have an opportunity to see what's going on in CTE even, even in the midst of a pandemic. And with our current statistics, last year, we had 68 CTE courses taught in Tassau County Schools. This year, we have 85 courses. Our number of students have gone down somewhat, as you can see, from 2699 to 2430 this year, and a lot of that is due to the hands-on and the virtual component. It's very difficult, and some students have chosen not to do it, so we are working very hard to build that back up in our coming years. We currently have 2,430 CTE students enrolled in the classes this year. 55 dual-credit classes were taught last year, dual-credit and other college-leveraged classes. 58 students this year, so we are increasing that. We have 39 CTE teachers this year. Four new classes were approved last year, and we have three new classes that are currently in the application process, so we are growing. One of the areas, though, that has taken a big hit, normally in a year, we have hundreds and hundreds of credentials. Last year, even with the pandemic stopping everything on March 13th, which is the beginning of our spring credentialing season, we still had 290 credentials earned last year. And we'll go into a little bit later on in the presentation, even though our students did not have the opportunity to do the spring credentials, many of them came back this fall and earned credentials even though they had not been in class, had not had instruction since March, and I think that's a testament to the quality of instruction that our teachers are given. Last year, 12 Graham High School DECA students qualified for state competition, and Dara Young placed in the top 10. Graham High School placed second out of the 17 schools at our annual Concord Business Challenge in October. 39 Tassau High School FBLA students placed in the top three in over 20 competitions at the 2019 regional competition. And Tassau High School students, Daniel Mullins was elected the New River FBLA Regional President, and Andrew Thomas was installed as the New River Region Parliamentary, and our students are taking leadership roles throughout our area. Again, Richlands High School DECA students, they placed in the top three at district competition. We had eight at the career and technical students who won at the Virginia State Fair in masonry, hair cutting, carpentry, and auto service technology. We developed the masonry partnership with the town of Tassau, and our students are very proud of the work that they've done to pour that sidewalk that leads up to the school. We revamped the major clarity platform, which is the platform that our students use in seventh grade to begin their academic and career plans, and we developed many in-house partnerships with transportation, and within our own campus at the Career and Technical Center. We had students working at Richlands High School, and just multiple projects at a variety of shops and schools, and it really gives the students an opportunity to build pride in their homeschool, in our school, and to show their fellow students what they're learning at the school. Some other outstanding achievements was just our regional trainings. We hosted with their CTE department within the county, we hosted two, one in the fall and then one right before the world shut down, it was actually March 12th, so it was literally the day before. But going on to 2020, 2021, and what's coming up on the horizon, this year, we had a Tassau High School student, Jonathan Collier, who earned a perfect score on his MOS Word 2019 exam during the fall, and he was selected to compete in the national championships in June. Another Tassau High School student competed in speaking and performance events in December and January, and they will go on to online testing that's gonna be held in February, actually next week, the 15th through the 26th, so we'll know what, how they do in their competitions very shortly. In the DECA world, 29 Richlands High School students competed in December, 20 Graham High School, and 20 Tassau High School, and all three, all three schools will be very well represented in March. Richlands will send eight, Graham will send 12, and Tassau High School will send nine, and they'll all compete at the virtual state leadership conference that's gonna be held March 3rd through the 7th, so we wish them very well. The 2019 and 2020 credentials that they were not able to earn in the spring, we tried to go back and give them an opportunity in the fall. We had one student who passed her cosmetology state board in July, even though she had not had instruction since March. Eight students passed their certified nurse aide state licensers, and we've had 32 ASE and NOCT credentials at the career center. And there are other credentials that have been earned at the high schools, but I haven't got those reports yet, but they're already working on credentials at the home high schools as well. So our students are still performing very, very well. Last year, the, we went and updated our competency attainment tracking system, the competencies are the SOL equivalent in our world, and we have to track those competencies just like you would with the SOLs. And last year, we went with the state, we modernized and went online, and then in the summer, their data bank or their servers died, and so we were left trying to figure out, and all of us in our region were trying to figure out how we were gonna do it. So I got together with Michelle Brown in our technology department, who is also a former CTE teacher, and we worked to put together a program so that now it's in-house. Our teachers still have the convenience and of record-keeping with the electronic versions, but we no longer have to depend on outside servers, so we are completely in-house and can keep it perpetuated throughout the years with very little maintenance. So that's been a big deal for us this year. Also, thanks to your support, in the spring of last year, we started internships and co-op. Students now have the opportunity to co-op much like they do for FBLA and DECA, but they can do it from the Career and Tech Center, and this year, even with the pandemic, we have three students who are taking advantage of the cooperative education. One, I would like to go back and just highlight because I'm so proud of her. The one student is a senior at Tassau High School. She is the one who passed her state board in cosmetology in July. She is now working full-time at a shop in Blueville, so when she graduates, she will have her state licensure, one full year of experience, and be ready to start her own shop, and I am so proud of that young lady. And that's just an example of the things that we're trying to do with career and technical education, so that students, as soon as they graduate, they are ready to enter the world, the workforce, trained and well-prepared. We also, tonight, as you know, you approved our JVG coordinator for the career center. That is going to be a very significant addition to our career center. This person will act sort of as a career coach that is based at the career center. She will help, or he rather, will help to build liaisons with our business partnerships that will provide job shadowing, the soft skills, and really be that one person that is working very hard to connect our students so that they will be ready to have jobs for our graduates just as soon as they graduate. And so that's gonna be a great asset for our school. We are also working with the, or the board of supervisors on a grant that is going to provide a new equipment, new classes, and hopefully will benefit not only our students, but adult students, and support our local economy as well. And we're still working out the logistics with Mr. Young, but we're very excited to see where this is coming. We are partnering with Southwest Virginia Community College to provide adult certification classes in welding and auto botting, similar to the ones that you allowed us to start with the certified nurse aides, so we're hoping to go on and add more adult classes. We're working out the details on that. We are working with college leverage opportunities to provide more dual-credit for our high school students so that they can be earning college credit as well. This year, we did begin the dual, dual-credit in criminal justice, and we are hoping to start with welding in the fall of next year, so our students will have the opportunity to earn both high school and college credit as well. We also have three new classes that are in the application process. One is mechatronics, which is the one that we're working with to support the grant with the board of supervisors, and we're very excited to see how that's going to go. And also, entrepreneurship is something that is very well suited for our area, and we're excited to get those going as well, and those will be at all three high schools. We are continuing our in-house partnerships. Dr. Stacy had our carpentry class to build picnic tables for all of the schools, and hopefully, if we can get our students back, we'll be able to finish the last of those up hopefully this week or maybe next. We've been working on more projects with each of the schools, completing more campus repairs and updates, and working on the Title I family engagement bus when they get their funding, so lots of things that are going on. We have worked with the town of Tassau on their Buckhorn Mountain Recreation Project and did the signs for the new trails that are here in Tassau, and are hoping to continue and expand on that to build kiosks and maybe work with the Bluefield Rec Park on some of their trails as well. We are continuing our partnership with the Workforce Development Board to have Tassau County certified as a workforce-ready community, and we are building potential future partnerships with some businesses that are considering locations. We had a visit two weeks ago with Lori Stacy, brought them from the Chamber of Commerce, and they were very, very pleased with our campus and just very, very supportive. So we're hoping that we're gonna be able to build that partnership and be a pipeline for them if they do decide to establish here in Tassau. And as we continue to build towards the future, we hope to continue with campus tours with students from all ages and bring them, starting in the elementary school as soon as we can get back to some more in-person activities. We are maintaining and developing new business and post-secondary educational partners, updating the facilities, not just at the career center, but at the high schools, updating our equipment, adding new courses, and we're always searching for new opportunities, ways that we can support our schools and our economy. I am not gonna read that proclamation because I cannot see from here.
He says a lot of proclamations.
We do, but the long and the short of it is that the governor and the state of Virginia recognizes the benefit and that our career and technical education adds not only to our school system, but also to the state and to the global economy, and we are very glad for the support from the state level, but we're also very, very happy for the support that you provide our students every day, and we want to thank you for your support. And I do want to give, again, a large shout-out to our career and technical education teachers who have really worked day in and day out to support the kids in a world that they're not used to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Beavers. It's wonderful to hear all the good things that have happened and happening at the Career and Technical Center. We appreciate that. Now we, time for hearing of citizens, and I had no one to sign up. And I had no one to sign up out front to speak. So we will move on to hearing of employees. Second call for employees. All employees are encouraged and welcome to speak at any time that you would like to. We do take your comments and try to do what we can to answer the questions and so forth. Third call. All right, we will move on into unfinished business. All right, you have the 2021, 2022 academic school year calendar drafts. Draft C was the one that was proposed for us to adopt for this year.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, what I would recommend to the board tonight would be to adopt Draft C, but also to let Ms., there's been a lot of communication, a lot of talk about year-round school. So I would propose that you approve Draft C for the next school year, but also allow Ms. Hill to debate or to share information on year-round school.
Yes. Do you want to vote on this year's calendar first, or?
Doesn't matter. We can go ahead.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we adopt the traditional calendar Draft C for the 2021, 22 school year.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the proposed Draft C for our school calendar for next year. Any discussion?
Yeah, Dr. Stacy, we may be putting the cart before the horse by voting before we have the presentation. This is a 190-day part calendar.
Yes, sir.
And the reason for that is?
Yeah, the governor and the state superintendent, when we did our recovery plan, had asked us to commit to 190 days for three years when we started back in this school year.
And the proposal for consideration of year-round school in this board's idea, that also came from the governor's office.
Yes, sir. The last, actually, it, it has been discussed in the past through the governor's office, and then last Thursday's governor's press conference actually put a lot of steam behind that. But Ms. Hill has been working for the past month to get some examples of what, what it could possibly look like, and so she has those tonight in your packet.
And she's just going to send out a survey?
She'll share that.
We'll have to get on to that in a minute. Right now, this Draft C, it's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion on Calendar C? Okay, let's, ready for a vote? All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Okay, Calendar C then has been adopted, and Ms. Hill, if you would?
Yes, ma'am.
Present to us on your information on the year-round calendar that's being proposed from the governor's office.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, school board members, Dr. Stacy, Ms. Bailey. We did present this academic calendar at the January 11th school board meeting, and it was voted to hold off because there was, I guess, information that the governor was looking at year-round schooling, and we didn't want to vote in January and have to turn around and vote again. We do have the proposed Draft C calendar. Three drafts were presented to our professional staff to vote on, and that's the draft that was chosen. In your packets, I did provide you information on year-round schooling that was out from the governor. I gave you some examples of different states, different calendars on the year round. Also, place in your packets, the two examples of a year-round calendar in, in Tassel County, if, if that was the direction the governor was going. There are different perspectives. I think gay-like city schools at one point, a year or so ago, they didn't really go with year-round schooling, but they did like the modified version of it, just taking time off at different times throughout the year, but then they went away with that as well. There is a survey in there for you to look at to see if that's something that you would like to survey our communities, to get feedback from the, the communities and, and teachers and staff to see what their thoughts are on a year-round school. You would basically have to start the July, the week after July 4th, around July 12th, 13th, and you would just take intermittent leave throughout the course of the academic year instead of three months in the summer. So it's kind of set up where you have a fall break, a winter break, spring break, and then a summer break. So that's in there for your review, along with some data and, and different things there. If, you know, if he had gone to year-round schooling, we were kind of ready, having information for you to, to look at. But there, there are several things, and I think the community survey will answer a lot of questions for our county. You know, childcare, can you get childcare two or three weeks, four times a year? Can you get it during the summer? You know, different things like that would have to be looked at.
And, and again, the, the year-round school, the, the total number of days would not be different than what we do now. It would just be spread out again over the course of a year. And like Ms. Hill said, there's, there's probably some pros and cons to, to the system. So we're asking for permission to survey, and again, just so folks can share their input, community members, parents, teachers, everyone will have their chance to give us some input. But I kind of reiterate, this, this was kind of started at the governor's office, and so we're trying to do our due diligence to be prepared if it ever is a mandate, or if the board would ever choose to do so. But I think you adopting the calendar tonight and allowing us to spend the next six to eight months, you know, reviewing it and, and sharing with the board what we find out, so that if we would go to a year-round school, it would definitely be after next year, so that everybody would have time to make preparations. But again, Ms. Hill, again, has done, has given you a wealth of information there, and the survey that she could put out of Survey Monkey. She, she would put the survey out online, and we would have paper copies available for those who needed it. But I just think that right now, we are in the infancy of information gathering, so I don't want anybody to, to panic. We're not, you've obviously adopted the calendar for next year. This is just something that we're gathering information on to see. Anytime you mention year-round school, you're going to get some response quickly, but sometimes the, the concept of year-round school is not exactly what folks think. And as Ms. Hill just stated, there's scheduled breaks. The amount of time in the classroom versus out of the classroom is, is equivalent, 190 days. So again, I, that's all we're asking for is your permission to gather some information.
Right, according, we have some counties in Virginia that do year-round school, and they, they go six or nine weeks and take a couple of weeks off, and then they get six weeks off in the summer, and they still, like you said, Dr. Stacy, just go their 190 days.
It's still a 200-day contract, just like we've always had. Nothing like that changed.
200-day contract, teachers have always had. It wouldn't be any different there. But again, this is not anything that's going to happen next year. Board, what is your desire about doing the survey to get the community input from parents and students?
I think it's important that, that when we do the surveys, the community not be given the impression that we're pushing an agenda, but rather preparing for what is likely to come legislatively in the next few years.
Absolutely. We weren't sure until after he came out this past week and did his press conference. We weren't exactly sure what was going to come down from the governor's office for this year. That's why we had tabled the calendar for this month. But, so this is just a survey in case something from the governor's office comes down for the year after next, or something in the future.
Probably two to three, I would think.
Pardon?
It'd probably be two to three, I would think.
I would like to say if there are any other questions you would like added, or if there's something there you don't feel we need to have on there. We'll wait for your.
I thought it looked good.
Did you?
Thank you.
So do y'all want to proceed with the survey? Do we need a motion on that?
I don't think so. We just wanted to.
Okay, to proceed then? Okay.
And Ms. Hill, I'd like to thank you for the very extensive and thorough research. It was a lot of information. It was very informative, very helpful.
Yeah, changed my idea of what year-round school was.
And just to explain like a traditional model. Yeah. And there's several models to go from, but you still can build around that 190 days. And I know a lot of families have gotten where they like to take breaks at different times of the year. So, you know, that's a consideration for future years. I can see those sides of this. And teachers still would not go beyond their contract time. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Moving to new business, esports. Mr. Dixon, Graham High School, and Mr. McGee, Director of Secondary Education.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, board members, Dr. Stacy, Ms. Hill, Ms. Bailey. In May of 2019, the Virginia High School League Executive Committee approved a requirement from the VHSL staff to approve a one-year pilot electronic sports, esports. Esports is not video gaming, but an organized competitive activity governed by rules and guidelines between two teams. Like all other VHSL education-based activities, students participating in esports will be required to meet academic eligibility requirements. School teams will have a coach, a required practice time, so students will have to find a balance between practice, games, and schoolwork. By participating on an organized school team, rules, practice schedules regarding the amount of time students spend on the activity will be set and monitored. Of course, the mission of the Virginia High School League is to promote education, leadership, sportsmanship, character, and citizenship for students by establishing and maintaining high standards for school activities and competitions. Mr. Dixon has provided a very nice, short overview of esports, and I'll let him present this to you all.
Thank you. I appreciate you all letting me be here tonight. I'm representing not only myself tonight, but Mr. Ronnie Sparks at Richlands High School. And again, I put together a very, very short powerpoint. I've emailed it to the school board members, your email. I'm not going to play the video because I want to spare your time. You can watch that on your own. But I did what kind of want to, you know, kind of like the, the summer school program, there's people, or, or year-round school, I'm sorry, people don't really understand it, and esports is, is kind of the same way. This is something that's not going away. This is something that is, it's going to keep moving forward. Colleges are offering up scholarships, and, and it's blowing up in what they call the competitive gaming world. And, and I just want to give a brief overview and talk about that. Currently, there are two schools, Graham High School, I started this year, and, and I was the coach. I couldn't, I couldn't find the, kind of what athletic directors do. Sometimes you're forced into a coaching role. I had a young man approach me a couple of years ago and say, Coach Dixon, have you heard about what esports is? And if any of y'all have ever been to Richmond and, and any athletic meetings, usually have a bunch of football coaches in there, like, like what I've been before. And, and whenever esports, competitive gaming came up, everybody started laughing in the room. Well, now you get here two years later, and boom, it's exploding. And it's what kids enjoy. Kids are, I've talked to several colleges over the last couple of weeks, and they say this is going to pass our secondary sports. I'm talking about, you know, some of the, the non-revenue sports. We'll have more participation here soon. And Richlands currently has over 30 students in their esports program. They've been doing it for two years. Mr. McGee mentioned the pilot program in 2019. They were in on that. We were not. We started this fall. I had 11 this fall. If I would have advertised this thing fully, I don't know if I could have handled all the kids, and I'll get to that point. But anyway, what is esports? Mr. McGee kind of alluded to it. It's online gaming that uses critical thinking, communication, and collaboration, and it is the fastest-growing activity or sport in the United States. It will pass your secondary sports here soon. I was skeptical at first of, you know, what's a sport, what's not a sport? Okay? And my job as an athletic director is to be open-minded. And I think the word inclusive environment here, we're trying to reach kids. It's easy to reach the kids that play normal sports. It's, it's usually our same kids. At Graham High School, the kids that are playing football, basketball, they're playing everything. But how are we reaching the other kids that want to be involved in our school that are not doing something else, whether it be banned or something like that? And that was what my job was. I had that young man approach me, and I said, you know what? Let me look into this. And the, the interest has been outstanding. So we're going to start reaching kids that we normally wouldn't reach and give them some pride and passion in our school. And I do want to read this from Mr. Sparks down at Richlands real quick. He has been a volleyball coach and a wrestling coach here in the county in his time. He says, "I've seen many of the same benefits for students that are participating in esports that I saw in students that played traditional sports when I coached wrestling and girls' volleyball. They learn teamwork and build a positive relationship with one another, as well as having pride in their school. Many of these kids have never had the opportunity to represent their school in a competition, and I see how excited that makes them when they are successful." So again, that's the whole goal of this program. And again, are we going to get some overlap? Absolutely. I had a couple soccer guys play on my esports team this fall. But you're also, I, I had a few others that weren't ever doing anything, participating anything else at Graham High School, and they loved it. And from a dad point of view, I put my dad hat on a little bit, I, I really enjoyed seeing that. The benefits, obviously, just like any other team or being involved in any program or activity, you've got positive relationships, teamwork, reaching new students. I think that's the big thing. And there's college, college scholarships, which I'll get to here in a few minutes. I also want to go to bat for the coach because I didn't realize how much they had to do. And, and I had a little bit of break from the, the sports in the fall, so I had a little more time on our, in my hands. Luckily, Mike Blevins at Graham High School is calling to come and support me in the spring time to keep the thing going at Graham while I'm doing the others. But these coaches do a lot. There's two seasons. They're each three months long. They run a traditional practice, like you would, a regular football practice. Our kids will tape, if we're playing, there's a game called Rocket League. It's playing soccer with cars. And the kids will, will tape. We can, we can save the file, and we can go back and watch film on what we did well, what we didn't do well. So, so it's pretty neat. You have tryouts. We have tryout curriculums, film study, and we have to do scheduling. I, I think the neat thing about scheduling, other than the Virginia High School League, are teams that don't participate in the, in the Virginia High School League can, compete regionally. And I played against a team from South Dakota. I played for teams from Arkansas this year. And getting to talk to those folks and having the kids talk to one another and communicate, it, it was pretty neat. Coaches have to set up the Discord app to communicate with students. That's an app on my phone. I could ping my students right now on my phone, and we could start talking. And so if a kid was using Xbox, and one kid was on PlayStation, and one was on their gaming computer, that's how they could communicate cross-platform. Now, with COVID going on, we're allowed to participate from home virtually, like, sort of like school. We, we have the, that ideal. Now, eventually, when this thing gets back to normal, looking ahead, we're going to have to be supervised in a traditional classroom setting like any other sport. So right now, there are some benefits with that, and, and I'll get to some of the things maybe we need to look forward here in a few minutes. Some frequently asked questions, how much does it cost? Where Richlands did it, has did it for the second year, they had to pay $64 per student, and the kids paid that. And the kids provide, had to provide their own gaming computer. Well, that eliminates some kids there. They can't afford gaming computers. I don't know if you've looked into them. I, I've got younger kids, and they're into all this stuff. Even my four-year-olds into gaming. They're very, very expensive, but, you know, that, that's not a bad rate, and the kids have paid that. For me at Graham High School this year, I ended up paying $20 for the entire year, fall and spring, because of the COVID special, as they call it. Now, next year, I'll, we'll have to pay $64 a student. How do we schedule and play games like a normal group? We get on that website right there, playversus.com, and I, I can let you all investigate that at your, at your own leisure, and that's how I do my scheduling, everything. It has standings, stats, it keeps all those things. And, and a good thing about it, there's no travel necessary. So when it gets back to normal, we can be in a classroom setting and do it that way. Right now, of course, we're doing virtually. I've reached out to these colleges and universities locally. Bluefield College is setting up their esports lab currently. They have a, I have a logo kind of on my shirt tonight. That's kind of our, you know, esports logo. It's pretty neat, and the kids liked it. It's something they rallied behind, and they would tell me, Coach, I got my shirt on at the house. You know what I mean? And they, they hit it up. So it, it was pretty cool. Concord University, they're offering up to $5,000 a year scholarships. Right now, their coach was very, very pumped up about it. King University, he was by far the most interesting coach I spoke to in the last three weeks. Um, they're a full Division One sports program there, and he says, he goes through all the training and stuff that a normal athlete would go to. He was really interesting. He said, "I would love to come to your school board meeting." I was like, "Well, I mean, maybe post-COVID, we can, uh, bring you in here and let you talk," but, um, they're off of full-ride scholarships and, and different variety of things, so there is money to be had. And then, uh, UVA-wise, it's a club sport. Dr. Stacy, uh, has his Virginia Tech. Uh, it's a club sport at Virginia Tech right now, some of the bigger universities. But Division Two and Division Three schools, it is, it is, uh, it's blowing up and, and going in a, uh, positive direction. Other than, there's a couple of things I want to end with. Um, first of all is the coaching. Um, there's a lot of time put into this, and, and I'm going to bat, not for myself, because I'm gonna try to find someone else to do this as the activity director. But for the coaches that's willing to do this, um, they're very deserving of a, of a stipend to do this. Uh, Mr. Sparks has put down here, um, you know, esports has a fall and spring season, about three months each. Uh, spent many hours, um, doing it, and they practice Monday to Friday like a regular sports program would. Um, so I, I will go to bat for those people because I realize how much it is. Once I got into it myself, um, it's like anything in, I'm sure with you folks with COVID, what you're dealing with. Uh, people have no clue, uh, the stress you all are under, and you all did a fabulous job, uh, handling this situation for us. The future of our schools. I, I just kinda wanna look ahead past COVID a little bit and, and have you think about this. Um, funding and gaming labs in our schools, possibly. We already have great computer labs, and what we would need to do is to upgrade those computers to gaming computers. And we wouldn't have to buy new computers, but we'd have to update the software. Ms. Beavers has a, a great staff. She has a guy, Mikey Akers, uh, that, that works for her. Um, and he is, I, I wanted him as media sports coach, um, but he was, he was dealing with some issues. But, uh, I think with our IT department and everything, um, we, we could really, uh, you know, get, make that happen. It would, it would come as some calls, and we can discuss that later, but something to look for. Um, and again, just support from you folks, and just to realize that, um, this is gonna happen. Kids love it. Kids enjoy it. I will say, in the grand scheme of things, uh, this may be bigger than, than many, many of the sports that we have in our, uh, county currently. Um, so, so that's all I've got. I've emailed you, uh, the presentations, and I'd be glad to take any questions if you have any, uh, of me, or you're welcome to email me, or, uh, uh, Mr. Robinson, Dr. Stacy have my cellphone number. Feel free to call anytime and ask me any questions about the esports program. I, I do think it's great for our county.
Coach, will this eventually end in the middle schools as well?
Yes. Uh, and I put, uh, and I'm glad you mentioned that. Uh, Mr. Sparks put that in his statement. He said, "We do need equipment for sure," and when I'm piggybacking on the equipment thing, "we would, uh, have more students participate if the school had computers for them." On an additional note, playver, uh, in the future with the Play Versus, that's where we play, they're looking at offering youth leagues, which would include middle-school age students. Um, and, and I don't know if y'all have, uh, I know Ms., uh, I went on an MGA trip with Ms. Moore, your son, uh, years ago on MGA, and we were riding on a charter bus. And on the way down, and, and this is the top-of-the-line students we got in the county, and, uh, and Race was a, a big football player, and, uh, I had trouble scouting him when I was, uh, calling plays there for Graham. He's a big defensive end. What are they doing on the bus? They're playing these competitive games the entire way down. And if I'm in the hallway, out in the hallway, and I'll tell some of my football guys or whatever, "Hey," uh, and they're getting ready to pilot Madden, believe it or not, and FIFA, and some of these other things, I said, "I got this going on." And they, they don't make fun. They light up. And they're, I mean, they're, they're competitive, and they wanna get involved with it. So, um, it, it's something I just wanna, I feel like we need to get ahead of, because I think it's gonna start.
Once COVID stops, uh, and you were talking about the gaming, gaming lab, will those kids that, before we had the gaming labs, are they gonna, and you, I think that you said that they would be, have to play in person?
Yes.
Are they gonna have to bring those gaming computers from their house?
Correct.
Because, that's no joke. I, I mean...
Yeah, those are, I was talking to the...
My son's got one, and it's...
Yeah, it is no joke. And, and that's where, when I'm talking about inclusive, there's so many kids that wanna do this. But there's not a lot of ki-, there, there's many of our kids, like, like in anything, uh, that not, may not have the means.
Yeah, 'cause it's not the Xbox or the Playstation or one of those.
Correct. It's a PC gaming computer. Yes.
It's the whole gaming system.
Yes, it is. And, um, it, it, those computers, and I've talked to, I've talked to Mike Blevins. He's a business teacher over there, and I, and I've just kinda pitched in his room and just joking around with him, "Hey, I'd like for this to eventually be a, a classroom." And I pitched it with Mr. Carr, my principal, and then after school, I'd like for this to be a gaming lab. And it doesn't have to be fancy. It doesn't have to have all the, the chairs that some of the other schools, but the opportunity for other students. If we could look at funding, uh, that in the future, it would be fantastic.
How much does it cost to upgrade a regular computer to the gaming? Do you know?
Yeah, you're looking, you're looking at a couple thousand dollars.
Per computer?
Per computer. Yes, ma'am. I was talking to, uh, someone out of Alexandria, Virginia, uh, and some of the bigger schools. They, they have giant labs. Um, and, and I'm, I'm talking just solely for esports. I mean, it's amazing. And it's kinda what Bluefield College has, which what King has. It, it'd be a couple thousand dollars per, per computer. So there is some funding to be had there, yes.
One of my friends, I mean, that I work with, his son got a scholarship for Randolph-Macon.
Right.
And he's participating on that team right now.
And, and speaking with King University's coach, again, the guy's very passionate. I mean, they're, they're full-blown. You go to their athletics page, it's on there. And, um, he said that Division One is, is starting to slowly pick it up. And the smaller schools, Division Two, Division Three, have got it right now, and soon, Division One. And again, it's starting at, at club sports, like they traditionally do, like, uh, Virginia Tech's and different, uh, East Tennessee states and places like that. But it'll be a full-fledged program soon.
Madam Chair, I, I don't, I've listened to this. I kinda understand how Bernie Sanders felt at the inauguration, because I'm not sure half of what I've heard I understand, but, um, I think we need to seriously get into this movement. I got a problem with, um, charging kids to, to participate in sports, really. That's, that's my first problem, but, um, we probably could get a lot more kids, uh, scholarships to good schools than we are with traditional sports programs.
Oh, absolutely.
Dr. Stacy, as we look at the budget and development for next year, start, start looking at developing esports, whatever they are.
It's an up-and-coming thing. I've had a couple parents from the Richlands area talk to me about it for their children, and, I mean, any of us around kids, we know kids are sitting around playing games all the time and really getting into this, and there is a big future in it. And I think one of their sons has even developed a game to play and so forth. So there's, there is a big future for kids in this.
Again, you can, and, and that's like I tell my kids now, YouTube's so popular, uh, and, and I, I get it. I was like, until I was put into it, and, and I had that, and I still don't understand it all, trust me. There's some of the games that they're playing, and I was supposed to be coaching, that I did not understand, okay? And, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna tell the truth. I related to the soccer kids that were playing Rocket League because those guys wanted to win, and I kinda understood that they were supposed to put the ball in the goal with the rocket car. But some of the other games, I did not understand. But you know what? The kids loved it, and they knew what they were doing. And I was reaching kids there that I wouldn't reach or have a relationship with on a normal, daily basis. And, and that's the whole goal of that.
Absolutely.
Thank you all very much.
Any other questions for board members?
No, thank you.
It's like a great opportunity for our kids.
Thank you. And I think Mr. Withard's idea, if we can check into that and...
Thank you. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to see it at all three high schools. So, Mr. McGee, if you can work on Tazwell, please?
Yes, ma'am. And I spoke with, uh, Mr. Smith last week, and I think he had touched base, but he said at this point, but I think we need to stir that pot just a little bit.
Right. And then the middle schools. I love that idea also. That's great. And then fall sports. Mr. McGee?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, Madam Co-Chair, Board Members, Dr. Stacy, Ms. Hill, Ms. Bailey. Here's how Virginia High School fall sports will look in 2021. The Virginia High School League has adopted the so-called championship-plus-one model for the scheduling of high school sports. What that means is, in all sports, teams will play sixty percent of their regular-season games. They typically would play under a normal, non-pandemic circumstance, and will also be eligible for regional and state championships. Teams that do not compete in regional or state championships will be allowed to schedule an additional regular-season contest. Football would play six-game schedule and begin on February twenty-second. Teams will have seven dates to play six games, with the regular season lasting from February twenty-second through April second. Practices for football can begin on February fourth, and in fact, all, all three of the county teams began last Thursday. Football regionals will begin on April seventh. The VHSL will only accept regional champions in the state playoffs this season, and the semifinals will be played on April twenty-fourth, with the championship on May first. The team highest in the bracket will host regional and state championship events, as opposed to going to a neutral site. If a game is not played due to COVID, it will not count as forfeit. It is, just simply won't be played. And then our other fall sports will follow suit. Competition, competition cheer also had the ability to begin on February fourth. Cross-country may begin February fifteenth, golf, February fifteenth, and volleyball, February fifteenth. Now, comes to the sore spot, I think, with everyone. I copied one page or the portion of the Governor's Executive Order Seventy-two, I think, that applies to us at this time. We know from just finishing up with basketball and indoor sports, indoor spectators was limited to twenty-five persons per field. So what we did was, we allowed each of the, of the home teams to, each player had two tickets. It's a little bit different, um, for outdoors. And here's the sore spot that I think we're gonna endure. Outdoor spectators are limited to two guests per player, which means that each contestant may have two guests. As of today, and this will, executive order, we have been told, will run through at least the first week of March. Band and cheer count as spectators, as spelled out by the governor. So that puts us in a dilemma where if Richlands and Graham are playing March, uh, February twenty-seventh, Graham has fifty football players, Richlands has fifty football players. Each team gets two guests. There will be two hundred guests, max, at Ernie Hicks Stadium for that date.
So what about the cheerleaders?
Cheerleaders are spectators. So I spoke with Dr. Stacy. We're gonna meet with principals, athletic directors next week, and we have to come up with a solution. At this point, the governor says cheerleaders and band members are spectators. The only ones getting tickets will be the players on the two teams. Two guests for the home team, two guests for the visiting team. And all of this is in the Governor's Executive Order Seventy-two.
So cheerleaders and band members do not get a ticket for either parent or anything, right?
No, ma'am. Not at this time. I spoke with, I spoke with, uh, Mr. Dolan, uh, with the VHSL on Thursday and Friday. Um, I think the VHSL is doing all they can do, uh, pushing the governor to try to release or ease some of these, um, rules concerning cheer and band, but at this time, their, all of their requests are falling upon deaf ears, and he said he would not revisit this order until at least the first week of March.
But wouldn't we want the cheerleaders and the band members to be there since we wanna be about the kids instead of just about the parents?
Absolutely.
So, I mean, I just wanna make sure that those kids that have worked hard, the band members, the cheerleaders, they've worked very hard, just like the football players, to be participants at the football game.
Yes, sir, and that's what we want. We are all upset over, over this order.
I want the parents to be there. I'd love them to be there, but it's not about the parents, it's about the kids.
I agree.
Well, our, our issue right now is, if the scenario plays out like Mr. McGee laid it out, there's not enough spots for even all of the cheerleaders or all of the bands. And that's what we're trying to figure out, is how to get those in. And I don't know, I haven't polled the schools to see how many football players they have. That's gonna dictate probably the largest amount of tickets. But if, again, if what Mr. McGee said, if some, both teams have fifty players or more, you know, it, it goes up. So if you had two hundred parents, fifty, or two guests per, uh, player, there's two hundred people, and then you had bands of, of thirty-five, forty, fifty, um, it can go, you know, it could take up all the spots. And so our argument was, make cheerleaders and make band members part of the, the participants, not attendees. And we were told in no uncertain terms that the governor nor his office will review this again until the end of the month. And so the majority of our season is in March, uh, and carrying over to April. But all of our three high schools, uh, have at least one game, uh, the end of this month.
Yes, sir. All three schools start the la-, I think it's March twenty-sixth.
What are we gonna do on that game?
So that's what we're gonna try to work out and try to get with the district and see what we can do. Um, I, I don't know. I mean, I, that's, that's the question. But I don't know how many players everybody has yet. We don't know. I don't know the cheerleading squad size nor the band size.
Right. And the backside of this scenario could be, a visiting team could have more spectators in a, in the, in the stands than the home team. If, if the home team had thirty, thirty players, that's sixty tickets, and if the visiting team had fifty players, they're gonna get a hundred tickets. So you're gonna have a hundred spectators on the visiting side and sixty on the home side. So we're all in agreement with you, Ms. Robinson. Um, right now, though, uh, the VHSL, after, I guess, what they have seen from the governor, they're saying that they want parents the ability to see their children participate.
So some schools you go to, the cheerleaders and band could not go then. Is that what, is that what I'm understanding?
I think you're gonna see that throughout the state. Because through the VHSL, they're given a directive that each player gets two guests, and that's it.
And that, I know you're, what you're saying, and it was kind of our thought too, was that, first of all, we let all the kids in and no parents. But the governor's office come back and said, "No, each player, we are concerned with the players and their parents." And that's why they got two guests per player.
You know, it's hard to keep a bite of tongue during this career.
Well, trust me, Mr. McGee, myself, Ms. Hill, we've been in conferences. I've been on, uh, conference calls with the state. Uh, Billy Hahn from the Virginia High School League, uh, Secretary Carney was on one of the conference calls, Dr. James Lane, State Superintendent. Um, we're all with the same dilemma, but right now, from the governor's office, he's just saying that he will not revisit it, um, right now.
So all complaints go to the governor, not us, right?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, yeah.
And, and, and I would also like to say, um, Mr. Hahn, the VHSL Executive Director, uh, Mr. Dolan, all the VHSL Executive Committee, they are in agreement with us and not real happy with the situation, the way a lot of our students are, are gonna be left out, uh, during this fall season.
People need to contact their delegates, congressman, and governor, have them push the governor.
Yes.
Uh, would you explain about the NFHS so people can at least watch the games if they can attend?
Uh, yes. Um, I think we had a presentation back in the late spring, early summer, where, um, each of the county schools, we purchased the Pixelot camera system, which is, uh, a device that records through the NFHS system. I think it's ten ninety-nine a month, sixty-nine dollars a year to, uh, buy that subscription. And once you do, you can log on. Uh, the games are archived, but you can log on and watch any game, um, throughout, uh, pretty much the state of Virginia. Uh, for sure, all three of our county high schools, all the games will be recorded. And that is a very nice, um, system that, that we, we have.
It's a system that the parents could use while the kids are at the game.
Yes, sir.
And it's for all sporting events, is that correct? Not just football?
Yes, it's, yes, it's, well, it's primarily for, for basketball. The cameras are installed in all three middle-school gyms, and...
They're not in Tazwell yet?
They had, I called Mr. Smith last week. Uh, they got halfway through the job, I think, and ran out of cable because of the layout of the balcony. So I think they had to order two hundred and fifty feet of cable to finish the camera in Tazwell Middle School. The camera is installed at Bulldog Stadium, Ernie Hicks Stadium, and Mitchell Stadium.
And I will say, I subscribe to that, and it's, it's getting, it's better than it was at the very beginning. There were some issues at the very beginning, but they have been ironed out.
Yes, ma'am.
And you can watch anybody on that thing.
It's, it's pretty neat. You can, you can just about watch any school in America, any game that you, that you want.
Any state. I watched a team in Tazwell, Tennessee the other night.
And the quality is really well. A lot of the teams have synced their radio stations with the, the, the video. So it, it is, it's quality broadcast. It really is.
Any other questions?
I'm gonna let Mr. Brown. He's gonna get through middle-school sports with you all, and I appreciate you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
We won't shoot the messenger. We won't shoot the messenger.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Stacy, Ms. Hill, Ms. Bailey, thank you. As I laid on your seats while you were in executive session, give a lot of credit to Coach Dixon here, as you heard him speak about our esports. He also put us together a county schedule for our middle school sports, following the same platform that we used during basketball, which we were blessed and had a lot of success during middle school basketball. We made the decision to keep those contests being in county only, where every school will compete against each other twice. Mr. Dixon's put this schedule together, and we've got a copy of it typed up for you to kind of see the location of the games. Volleyball will have try matches at each location. I think the good part about this is, the middle school season won't kick off officially until March first. Hopefully, we'll have a change in executive order seventy-two that will give us more guidance. And we've heard some rumblings and rumors, like Mr. McGee said here, that maybe the governor will open it up to thirty percent capacity of where we are now. So like at Ernie Hicks with the capacity of whatever, four thousand, you're talking like twelve hundred people maybe. So we're hoping and praying that comes to fruition in March when he revisits this. So one good thing about this, which we're going to try to do, obviously with the middle school teams, there are going to be much smaller numbers than our varsity and JV squads. So if we have, Tassau will come to Richlands and middle school football, we'll try to give two tickets there, and we'll, you know, I think it's important to get our cheerleaders, you know, they've missed out a lot. We'd like for our middle school cheer. Typically, they've just cheered home games. Since we're just playing four games, we'd like for the Tassau cheerleaders to come to Richlands and they cheer, give those girls the most opportunity to participate as well. So hopefully, we'll have the numbers, we'll have the tickets allocated where we can go parents for cheer and get those kids all involved. But we're still holding our fingers and holding our breath that March first, he'll come with something that will open this up and give more spectators more opportunity. But once again, piggybacking off the NFHS system, middle schools, we'll be able to watch those as well, opened up. We watched Richlands middle and grand middle play. Coach Dixon put his together pretty quickly. He was the first school that did it, and I give him a lot of credit for being a pioneer with this and leading all of our athletic fronts. But quality's getting better. It's like Ms. Mullins said, kind of working out some bugs and the scores being updated and the banners being, and if we can get some radio tied into this, I think we have a pretty good product for our parents and our grandparents and such. So, but there's a schedule put together. I wanted you all to have a master copy of that, volleyball and football, and trying to keep all of our kids involved as much as we can. So hopefully, we'll have some numbers to share. Maybe come back at the March board meeting with the different capacity numbers for you all to hear those numbers as well. But hopefully, we'll get some numbers from our middle school teams and our cheerleading squads here within the next week, and we'll have some numbers to report back to you, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Okay, SOL testing, Mr. Lambert. He is our instructional computer specialist and testing coordinator.
Thank you, Ms. Mullins, board members, Dr. Stacy. Dr. Stacy asked me last week to come out and visit with you about SOL testing, and I'd like to take just a few minutes to go through this. As we get ready to go through it, guys, I'm going to tell you what I know, which isn't a lot. And I'll be honest with you, I'm going to tell you what I know and what the state is telling me that we're going to do. Don't shoot the messenger, I'm doing like I was told. I was in a state testing meeting today, and the director of testing at the Department of Education is going full bore ahead, just like we're going to go with our regular testing schedule. So, you know, we do what we have to do. Okay, I'd like to talk to you about writing and non-writing. Okay, just to look back for just a minute, on Friday, March thirteenth, everything changed for us. We were getting ready to start testing the next week, and go the north and close the school for two weeks, and then a few weeks later, he closed them for the rest of the year. We didn't test writing in the spring, nor did we do non-writing, nor did we do VAP. All the collections were done, the teams were ready to score the VAP, but it was just like the SOL window never went for us. We did get to do WEDA, but we did not do any SOL testing in the spring. Okay, SOL test administrations for this year, this is straight from the DOE. SOL tests will be administered under secure locations, standardized testing conditions in the school and in the presence of school personnel. They will not be administered remotely. They will be at school. And when we test at school, all the requirements are going to be for protective equipment and social distancing, which means that if we had a lab that we were, I know Tassau High School has a very nice setup, and Richlands High School has a very nice setup in the libraries, and they can test a huge amount of students. Well, that's going to be at least half or less on that, so, you know, we're going to have to have a lot more time for testing. I will say, the test is, the state has given us some flexibility. We're going to need the flexibility to encourage students who are online to come in to test. They will need to test. So we're going to do what we can to get the kids in, to get those students tested. As I was going through this, I was trying to think of all these questions that I get asked all the time. So that's what I tried to do on this right here. And I wanted to talk about the opt-out program. Virginia does not have an opt-out policy for SOL testing. Parents always have the right, and have always had the right for the last few years, to decide whether their child is going to test or not. All we ask for parents to do, if they don't want to test, it has to be put in writing, or we'd like for it to be put in writing, saying why they don't want to test, and I collect those. The state has come up with a new testing status this year, a fifty-two for us to put in for parent refusals. But we do not have an opt-out. I mean, all students that are in an SOL course in grades three through eight, and most in the course classes, are going to test. What are we planning on testing this spring? All right, we're getting ready to start writing very soon. SOL writing for grade eight and in the course. It's a federal requirement that we have to test reading and math in grades three through eight and once in high school. Is that right, Ms. Whittington?
Yeah, you know the rules as well as I do.
For grades three through eight and once in high school, we're going to test Virginia Studies in grade four, Civics in grade eight, and then our intercourse tests are going to be intercourse reading, science, biology, chemistry, algebra one, algebra two, geometry, world history, world geography, Virginia-US history, and writing. The ones that have the asterisks beside it, we won't test all students in those, because if you've already earned the verified credits, you won't have to test. Now, y'all noticed, I didn't put an asterisk beside reading, because remember, we test grades three through eight and once in high school, so we have to test reading and writing in high school. Biology is a federal one, so we have to, everybody has to test in biology, and so those are the ones that we're going to have to test on. Our SOL testing windows, and we've gone back and forth and back and forth and back and forth on this, and the state has given us lots of flexibility on this. Our SOL, and I'm going to meet with school test coordinators in the next week, next three weeks, I'm going to be meeting with school test coordinators to go over all this with everybody. And guys, I know there are a lot of questions, and the rules keep changing every day. Rules changed again today, of things that they are going to allow us to do. But all of our students in grade eight and in the course will start through the month of March. This year, they can, we always gave them certain dates, you have to test this and you have to test this. Right now, you can test any day you want to in March all the way. We want them to be finished by April first, if possible. If not, exceptions can be made. And I'll go over that exception with you in just a moment. That'll be for the end of course, too. And then our non-writing is going to open, believe it or not, April the seventh instead of May the second or whatever we had, we're going to open it up on April the seventh. The state is going to give us a four-week window to get everything in, but if we're not finished, we're just going to keep testing. Guys, I don't know what the schedule's going to be, I don't know if we're still going to be virtually on Wednesdays or not, but we're going to try to get time to have all of our virtual kids come in. I understand the concerns of parents, if you're afraid to have your child come in during the school day, then we'll try to make arrangements that we can test on days that there won't be other students at school. We're going to try to keep our numbers as low as possible in testing situations, just as much as we can. I also mentioned to you just a minute ago about an exception for writing. The writing window will stay open until May the second. I think it's May the second, maybe it's May seventh, but we want to be finished by April first, if possible, because if not, our school test coordinators are going to have two windows open. They're going to have the writing test window open, and they're going to have the non-writing test window open, and that's going to be just a huge dilemma. Now, if we can't get everybody tested by April first, we have more time. I'll address this with you. I keep getting asked every day, are the feds going to give us a waiver this year? I don't know. I mean, I don't know. There have been some exceptions made for some high school credits for this year. I'm going to go over that with school test coordinators next week. They went over that with us today. I called Mr. McGee this evening, and I explained to him what some of those rules are, and I think it's something that we need to get in the hands of principals and school test coordinators as quickly as possible. For grades three through eight, if we have a parent refusal, we have a parent refusal. We want students to test if we can get them there. However, for high school, for students who do not test, they will not earn a verified credit in the course. So it's going to be a big penalty for high school students who, whose parents opt not to test, which is their right to do that. Do you have any questions for me, something that I haven't covered?
I'd like to add, Mr. Lambert alluded to us maybe doing some testing for the virtual kids on Wednesdays, and I've spoken to Mr. Mullins also. We will try to run buses if necessary. If we have groups of kids in certain areas that need transportation to get there for that testing, we will try to run buses. But again, we'll work with Mr. Lambert and the schools and transportation to develop a plan.
Okay. You have a question? Thank you, Mr. Lambert.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, permission for roofing bids for Tassau High School, Mr. Beavers?
Madam Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, School Board Members, Dr. Stacy, Ms. Hill, I'm here to ask permission to put out the bid to Tassau High School roof.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that the Tassau County School Board gives permission for Mr. Beavers to obtain roofing bids for Tassau High School.
I'll second it.
Thank you. There is a motion and second to allow permission to obtain roofing bids for Tassau High School. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Now, I'm here to ask for permission to put an emergency roof on Tassau in our It's the old section, it's not the whole roof. You should have pictures that I gave.
We do, we have the pictures. I know that's been a problem. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the emergency bid from Dunford Roofing in the amount of sixty-five thousand to repair the Tassau Intermediate School roof.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Second by Ms. Moore, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Beavers, you have permission to proceed. Thank you. Approval of state bid for bus purchases, Mr. Mullins?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Stacy and Ms. Hill. I'm here this evening to present state bids, purchase of five new school buses. And if I could have opportunity, something that's happened in the last few days, I'd like to update you about that I hadn't had a chance to present. I've been talking to Mark Lemon. He is with a Mid-Atlantic Electric School Bus Experience, and I've been talking to him about a pilot system for eight weeks to do a test and surveys on electric school buses for our district. And I will be contacting you soon about that, because I will need a letter of recommendation to go with the application on the second phase of that. So I'm looking forward to opportunities, see what this new technology can bring and how it will work with Southwest Virginia and our different kinds of terrain.
They would provide the charging station and everything?
That's correct. They do supply the charging station. We'll have to keep data about how many watts that uses. We will have to keep data how much energy the bus uses between runs, how long it takes to charge the bus, and we'll be giving them our data of what our gasoline buses and our diesel buses are using. They're even looking at the small buses, like our special needs with your gas. But mainly, it's going to be comparing our big buses that are diesel to the electric. Eventually, the electric mode's going to go from the large bus down to the small buses. So we'll be sharing all of our information with them.
That'd be interesting. How long will they stay charged?
Currently, they are saying a hundred and twenty miles on flat terrain if you don't use any accessories. If you use accessories, you lose twenty percent off the top. What they don't know is, a varying terrain like we got, how much more that's going to consume now that hundred-and-five mile range. So that would give us the opportunity to see if it's compatible. And Southwest Virginia is a good place to test it for the Mid-Atlantic region, but we can share that across the United States.
Why are they considering accessory?
Heating, camera system.
Go, go, go.
Yeah, yeah. So if you turn on the heater, or if you turn on your camera system and your radio, all that uses electricity.
You going to follow this thing around with jumper cables?
I have to go on short runs.
Well, that's one thing that, we can't jump it off, so we're going to have to keep a good monitoring system on that usage of batteries. Might have to follow it around with a tow truck, I don't know. Okay, but like I said, I'll be sending something out with you, that just came about, and I wanted you to be aware that I would be asking for your support as I finish the application for that.
That'd be interesting. I noticed your bid was for the large buses. Is there any problem getting those on our smaller roads, our small country roads?
It's not a large bus, that's a standard, right?
So...
No, his bid is for seventy...
For seventy-one passenger. I'll give you some comparison. The seventy-one passenger Thomas bus, overall length is thirty-six feet, eight inches. An international sixty-four passenger is thirty-five feet, nine inches. So we're looking eleven inches difference. Wheelbase, twenty-one feet, nine inches on the Thomas, and twenty-one foot, two inches on the international. Now, I will say, the Bluebirds, our older Bluebirds that you've seen, that monster's thirty-nine feet, two inches. That's a big difference. We're talking nearly four feet difference in them. They're not as easy to get around. But the eleven inches, we currently have seventeen of these on the road, and we've got thirty-one of the sixty-four ICs on the road, and we're just finding, we're able to haul more students.
Right.
And the cost of the bus is very similar. And as we're losing drivers, we just got to look how many we can haul at a time.
Right.
And then with the pandemic, you know, we're limited how many seats is on that bus, basically. So that's, we are going to come to time, probably next time, we won't look at seventy-ones, we'll probably look at sixty-fours and drop them back down. There are some roads I don't want even the other eleven inches. But I do have several routes that we're going to swap around buses to make that work and just make us as efficient as we can be.
Sounds good. Do we have a...
Make a motion that we approve the purchase of five seventy-one passenger Thomas school buses from the state bid in the amount of five hundred, eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Can I have a second about Ms. Moore? Any questions?
Let's make a comment, the counties around us are running much larger buses than the seventy-one passenger on the same-sized roads we've got, so I don't, very few roads, really, that we can't get larger buses on, are there?
I did have a seventy-seven down here, back in the summer as a test model. I would like to test one in the future with some drivers, but I let a few drivers...
I would like to test one in the future with some drivers, but I let a few drivers try it out and it scared them. So it was pretty big. But I could see the future of being a 77-passenger on certain routes. We might could use eight or nine of those, but probably that's all we would want to use it on.
Any other question? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mullins.
Thank you.
Thank you. Legislative update, Mr. Woodard?
I don't know what you wanted me to say.
What do you know?
Sometimes I think our legislators lost their minds sometimes, but I think that they're right on target. There are about 200 bills. The reason, I guess, she asks, because I chair the VSBA Legislative Positions Committee and the VSBA Federal Relations Committee. And we had, a couple of weeks ago, the State Capitol Conference, which we usually have in Richmond and then go to the Hill and lobby. And then last week, we had the Federal Relations Network, which is usually in DC, but we had it with all but one of the Congress Congressional Delegation of Virginia and then a town hall with both of our senators, which both went very well. But in our state legislature, there are about 200 bills, maybe a little bit more, that VSBA has been tracking and working on and had lobbyists on to, and you all get the action alerts, which sometimes we win, sometimes we lose. With two of them that are of particular interest to us that VSBA is supporting is House Bill 2027 from Cunha, who is looking to turn SO... She's a former school board member out of Chesterfield, by the way, and has a long history sitting on the seats where we are, trying to figure out how to get through SOL testing. And that bill, which has passed the House and gone through crossover to the Senate, turns SOL tests into measured achievement tests throughout the year, which is basically what we're doing in benchmarking throughout the year, instead of having one high state pass or fail at the end of the year. No idea if that's going to pass the Senate yet, or if it does, if the governor will sign it. Another one is by Senator Pilliam, 1401, deals with SOL testing too. It has passed the Senate and gone through crossover to the House, and it reduces the number of SOL tests in the Commonwealth to the federal minimum. We're one of those states who exceed the minimum quite a bit. One big one that we're opposing and trying to kill, that anybody here might want to call their House of Delegates members or any House delegate member across the state, is Senate Bill 1322. It passed the Senate and has gone to the House now. And it's about seizure management and requires banal training for nurses and some of the staff members in schools. And it's not so much the seizure management, but the way the bill is written and the liabilities that come with that, who's waived from liability and who is not, kind of takes away the Good Samaritan law protection some. And so that one hopefully will die in the House. And if anybody can put out a call to representatives in the House delegate on Senate Bill 1322. So those are three big ones of the 80 or 90-some that remain right now. So I'm sure that we'll get more emails as the special session starts, I think on Wednesday this, this week. And the budget's there too. We don't have a budget in Virginia yet. It's one special session.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. Proposed policy regulation, GBO-R, Ms. Taylor, Director of Personnel?
And I'll help Ms. Taylor here. It's a GBO-R, Ms. Mullins.
Oh, it is, I'm sorry.
You scared me there for a second. But I'd ask Ms. Taylor to be up here in case I get tongue-tied or forgetful. But back in the fall, the board had asked me to look at some sections of this policy and two things in particular. One was the years of service, but also the disability portion of our insurance. So started looking at this again back in the fall, and we sent it off, as everyone knows, we're self-insured. So we have our insurance consultants and we also have our lawyers. And of course, the insurance company has attorneys as well. So this has been through the process pretty much all fall and through the winter. And now we're finally prepared to give you a first draft or a first read of this policy this evening. But some of the key changes, and what you have in your package, you should have a red line version, and that is, that is the lawyer's legalese, so to speak. And then you have a clean version that's included, it's just not highlighted in red. So that also lets you see the differences. But I guess unbeknownst to us, or in the past, but when we became self-insured, again, we looked at finances a little bit differently. And one of the things that was in the previous policy was that those folks who left us on disability could no longer be on our insurance. Well, it came to light that, and I didn't know this, but if you are granted disability, that doesn't mean that you automatically get the Medicaid portion of that disability. And so lots of times, folks, obviously, when they become disabled, the insurance is a key component of what they need. And so we've learned that there's a waiting period of anywhere from six months to 24 months. And to go without insurance for six months to 24 months is a big deal, especially when you're dealing with something that has led to a disability diagnosis. So the new policy says that you would be allowed to stay on our insurance during that waiting period. And as soon as you did qualify for the Medicaid disability insurance, then you would come off of our insurance and go to the Medicaid insurance. Or if you turn 65 during that time period, because our policy right now is, once you're 65, you come off of, unless you're a full-time employee, you would stay on the insurance. But if you're retired or leaving on disability, once you turn 65, you would come off of our insurance. So that portion is in this policy as well. Letter D would kind of go into detail on that. The other portion of the policy, and again, being self-insured, you know, our consultant, Mr. Erby, an insurance company, retiree benefits is a big thing across the country and across the Commonwealth. And, you know, Tassau County has been very good to retirees and allowing them to stay on the insurance. A lot of people across the country are getting away from that, allowing the retirees to stay on. I don't have any, any desire, and I'm not asking the board, to push retirees off or those getting ready to retire. Some of the things that have been in our policy were that you had to work at least 20 years in the county and be 55 years of age. And so we have looked at that. And so in consulting with the attorneys, in consultation with our insurance representatives, what I'm suggesting we do is remove the age of 55 and use the VRS full retirement age of 50, but also add that the employee would have 25 years of service to Tassau County. And so that would, again, that would add five years to the previous, but it would also take off five years on the age barrier. So again, tonight is just a first read. I wanted to put this in your hands so that you can, you know, generate concerns. I have a couple of things here that I'm going to reach out to the attorney on, notably on letter, excuse me, number two, application, where it used to say should, and now it says must be making the application. I think I would prefer to go back to should, because sometimes we have some employees who don't know a year ahead of time that they want to retire. It can be a spur-of-the-moment thing. So I'm going to reach back out to the attorney. Also, in letter D, which I referenced earlier, I want to make sure that that says exactly what I think it says and what we meant it to say. And I'll be the first to admit, sometimes a good lawyer's writing, I have to read several times to make sure. But I'm going to reach back out to the attorneys again tomorrow and the next couple of days to make sure that that says exactly what I wanted to say. But again, this evening is just a first read, to put this information in your hand. And I apologize for the delay. Again, Ms. Taylor and I started looking at this probably about September, October, and but it's been vetted very well by the attorneys, by the insurance companies. And so I think if I can get a few of those little i's dotted and t's crossed, I think it'll be a good product to bring back to you for a second read next month.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve this first read?
Make a motion to approve the proposed policy regulation, GBO-R, Personnel Early Retirement Incentive Program as a first read.
Is there a second?
No.
Any discussion or question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Election day schedule, Dr. Stacy?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members. Much as we did in the fall, we will have election this spring. And as you know, we have a school that is a polling place, but we also have some schools that are next door to polling places and traffic becomes a nightmare. So what I would like to do for the week of Monday, March 22nd through Friday, March 26th, I would like to switch our virtual days. As you know, we're Monday, Tuesday in-person and Wednesday, virtual usually. What I would like to do is flip Tuesday and Wednesday of that week and make Tuesday the virtual day, but Wednesday an in-person day.
Okay. I don't think I have to do that.
No, I really don't. I just wanted to run that by you. It's the same thing that we did in the fall.
Right. Any questions?
No.
Good idea.
And I just, again, I wanted to put that out there. Of course, I have Ms. Mullins to, Ms. Lindsay Mullins, to get that out on the internet so that the public is well aware ahead of time.
I think early election began Friday, so you can vote prior to, if that makes your life easier.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Health Insurance Committee, Dr. Stacy?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to ask the school board to designate two members to serve on our insurance committee. I'm not going to steal any of Ms. Hill's thunder, she's going to give you an update later, but our insurance is out, RFP is out. And that, once it comes back, our insurance consultant will come in, will open the RFPs, he'll take them back to his office and get the nuts and bolts of each policy and then come back to us and meet as a committee to see which plans that are best for Tassau County.
Okay. I think Ms. Mooreier and Ms. Whittington had expressed interest of being on that.
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yes.
So Ms. Whittington and Ms. Mooreier?
Uh-huh. Do I, do we need to vote on that? Yes, we do, yeah.
Yeah, I would think you'd have to take a vote on that.
Need to vote on that one, okay? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to appoint Mrs. Mooreier and Ms. Whittington to serve on the Health Insurance Committee.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Dr. Stacy, the Budget Committee?
Yes, ma'am. I would like the school board to appoint two members to serve on the Budget Committee. And this is, kind of follows the format we've done in the past. I did meet with Mr. Young, the county administrator, last week. They have appointed their two members. And so if we have our two, we can meet as a group and then the respective board members can report back to their boards.
Okay. I know, I would like to be on it, and I think Ms. Whittington expressed that she would like to be. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to appoint following members of the board to the Budget Committee for the development of the 2021-22 budget. Ms. Mullins and Ms. Whittington.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
One no. Superintendent's report?
Yes, ma'am. At this time, I'd like Ms. Singleton to come up and give us an update on the school health services and namely, the vaccination updates.
Good evening, School Board Members, Madam Chair, Madam Co-Chair, Dr. Stacy, Ms. Hill, and Ms. Bailey. I'll give you an update on our COVID numbers. Right now, we have seven positive students and 63 quarantined, two positive employees and six quarantined. Also, would like to give an update on the vaccinations for the employees. We're getting ready to start the second dose of the COVID vaccines with the VDH administering those at the Tassau County Fairgrounds. The, about 2% of the employees have not received their first dose, but they can still get those on those Thursdays, starting March 4th and every Thursday through March. So the second doses will begin this Thursday, March 11th. And that will include the majority of our employees for their second dose. That will be about 350 employees on March 11th, I mean, excuse me, February 11th. The remainder will be split up the next Thursday and on the 18th and then the following Thursday on the 25th. So that's going to be approximately 175 employees on each day. There will be some left and they can still schedule those on those Thursdays in March. If you've not received a link, you can contact me and I'll send that out to you. And again, it's at the Tassau County Fairgrounds. That is also, I just want to reiterate, that is the Moderna. That is administered by the VDH, our Health Department. So just to talk about the side effects with that, they are expected. With the first dose, it is pretty mild. With the second dose, it is, we have had more complaints with that. And then also, it is in the studies or the data, it is found to be a little worse with the second dose. So the number one complaint is, of course, the pain in the arm. And then systemically, it's fatigue and headache. So that is expected. There's some other side effects with that, body aches, joint aches. Some people may experience some fever and even maybe some nausea. So that is expected. The Health Department will give you some paperwork and ask that you sign up for VSafe reporting so that you can report your symptoms to that website. And then they'll check in with you daily to see how that's going.
Is it just on the second dose that they do that?
No, that's on the first and the second. So, and lastly, the VDH had recommended a change in quarantine. I think maybe Dr. Stacy had talked to you all about that. Did you?
Go ahead.
Okay. The VDH, we had gone with the CDC guidelines that were reviewed and changed on December 7th, and the VDH had adopted those and we adopted them as well. We put that out to you that students and teachers or staff members could come back out of quarantine early on day seven, as long as they tested negative after day five and they were asymptomatic on day seven. The VDH now is recommending that staff members can still do that, but not students. Because of lack of testing for all students, excuse me, and also playing sports, they don't recommend that they come back any sooner than 10 days. So they would have to do the 10-day quarantine and return on day 11. And that would be only if they're asymptomatic. Otherwise, they'd have to complete the whole 14 days of quarantine. Do you want me to add anything else?
No, I'll just add too, and I'll, we've had a lot of comments from the community, excited that our employees are getting vaccinated, but also upset that we didn't do it all in one week, all in one day. And I would just stress again that we are on the Department of Health's schedule. They schedule us when they can. And they have other commitments to other groups. So that's why we've been on Thursdays and Fridays and every other week. So I do, I understand the community, the parents' frustration with going in person a couple of days and then going virtual again. But our priority, again, is to get as many of our employees vaccinated as possible. And again, the Department of Health has worked with this as best they can, but again, they just, doing it all in one week or all in one day is just not been possible. So that's why the schedule has been broken up. Also, talking to Dr. Shelton, she's our interim Health Department Director for the region. Once all of our employees, or the majority of our employees are vaccinated, my question to her was, if I had been vaccinated, I've had both doses, I've been 14 days after the second dose, and a student comes into my classroom, that student tests positive, do I, as a vaccinated employee or a vaccinated adult, do I have to still quarantine? And right now, the answer is yes. So she is still checking on that. I guess the last email that we got said that she's asked that question too. So she doesn't have an answer, so for right now, we'll still follow the same protocols that we do now. And even, and so the quarantine period for those vaccinated, that's up to debate. But what's not up to debate is that everything we're doing right now, we will continue to do. Mask wearing, social distancing, hand sanitizing stations, the special cleaning, that's going to be with us for a while. So it is exciting that we have a group of employees, a large group of employees that will be fully vaccinated within a couple of weeks, but our practices are not going to change. Everything will still stay the same. And again, you know, in reference back to the sports, Dr. Shelton was pretty clear that she wants everybody in the region to stop... to stop allowing students to come back after seven days and go with the full 10 days without symptoms.
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Singleton. I appreciate your help today too.
Ms. Cox, budget update, please.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, Board members, Dr. Stacy, Ms. Hill and Mrs. Bailey. The preparation of the 2021-22 budget is fully underway. We've compiled the information we've received from the community input survey. And we're also compiling information from the schools and departments as far as their budgetary needs. One of the things that we're looking at putting in the budget this year is a raise for all employees. And so we're going to be working on calculations on how to include that in the budget.
One of the things I'll say, and Ms. Cox is right, we're looking at it. When the governor originally came out, his first proposal included a 2% bonus. What we're looking at was at least doing a 2% raise plus a stamp. Now, there are other rumblings that 2% from the governor may be even higher, 4%, so to speak. So we will continue to take that input. But if we can do a raise over a bonus, we certainly will. So that's our budget focus as far as that goes. And again, still getting the input from the schools and even, you know, as of tonight, Coach Dixon, you know, with esports, there's still things that come trickling in. As we work through the spring, if there is carryover monies, obviously, we will be good stewards with that money. If there's facility projects that we can do now rather than later or try to budget for in future years, we will. But I think, you know, as far as finishing up the year with this budget, we're within our constraints. We're meeting, I figure our run rate seems to be well. So I think, you know, you appointed two budget members tonight with the schools continuing to give us information. I think we can get that process going pretty soon.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hill, CARES Act updates, excuse me.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, School Board members, in your packets, we have given you the CARES Act updates for the original CARES, the CARES set aside. We had a third round of CARES Act funding and then what we received from the county. You have that in your packets for the line item. Looks like we have about 1.232 million left in the CARES of all of them combined at this time. They do span over a two-year period. But with the cleaning supplies and different things that we're having to do, that goes pretty quickly. There is another round of CARES money available that we are writing, in the process of writing a grant for. Tassau County was awarded 6.1 million, a little bit over 6.1 million. That application has to be in by April 1st and we're currently working on that. So we will have another round and that will be good through September 20th through. Do you all have any questions on anything with the?
And I would like to brag on Ms. Hill a little bit. Obviously, she is down to the penny on the CARES Act. But the specifics of the CARES Act, when she talks about cleaning supplies, I would like to emphasize that the cleaning supplies are not just used in schools and classrooms. They're used in buses and field houses and gyms everywhere. So it's not just every classroom that's getting cleaned. It's the entire campus, so to speak. So all the facilities, including our buses. So when she says that cleaning supplies go quickly, they do. But I think we're doing a good job. I think our folks are doing their due diligence on making sure everything is cleaned.
And technology is also part of that, a huge part of that with their virtual online learning. We did just amend the original CARES Act and it was approved for us to order laptops for teachers. So that has, first rounds have already been ordered. I think that's, first shipment should be here soon on that. So we had to finagle because it wouldn't go through the vision. You just have to watch when it gets denied. You just keep going to another format and we finally did get that approved. So we're happy to, you know, announce that as well.
That's good.
Thank you for getting all that information together for us. Ms. Hill, insurance update, please.
Air Insurance, RFP was released on Friday, January 29th, 2021. Proposals are due no later than 1:00 PM on Monday, February 22nd, 2021. As Dr. Stacy said earlier, Mr. Sam Irby, Air Insurance Person, will be here on the 22nd. We will open the proposals at that time. We stamp them as they're received until that time. And then he will compile the information to show us what each carrier has proposed for our school system. We did have to, again, wait till January 29th because you had to put your data together of expenditures for our current insurance. So that has been submitted. We're in our third year with BPA and felt it was necessary to send out to see if there was something there better for our system. So.
Good.
And then with our insurance committee that was chosen tonight, we will, we will take a look at that.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, School Board members, Ms. Hill and Ms. Bailey. On January 28th, and I think that was a Thursday, Ms. Mullins?
It was.
Ms. Mullins and I attended an online regional virtual academy meeting. And, you know, we've been talking for the past couple of months about a regional online school. And so we're not the only ones. Everybody in Region 7, but really every region across the Commonwealth, everyone understands that, that there's a need. And so I'm going to try to go through this PowerPoint presentation as best I can. But the question was, why would you want to do that? Well, as we have heard, our teachers have told us, you know, from the beginning, that it is stressing to have to do in person and online learners. So the key component of this, what our goal is, not just Tassau County, but all the schools in the region and like I said, pretty much across the Commonwealth, is to try to lighten the burden off of our teachers. What our goal is, what we would like to have is that you have teachers who are teaching in-person learners only. And I have stated before, and I'll say it again, you know, we're not getting away from Google Classroom. If, even if we're just teaching in-person learners, our classroom teachers are teaching only in-person learners, they will still need to put their assignments up on Google Classroom, you know, due dates and those things. And this is primarily going to be for kids who have to miss for a day or two, a short illness, a doctor's appointment, dentist appointment, something like that. But we're hoping by the start of school in the fall that we're not going to be asking our teachers to teach a group of kids in person and then create videos and assignments and everything else like that to do a whole separate group of students online. That is the goal of the region and the online academy. Some other things that we're looking at doing, being in rural southwest Virginia, sometimes it is hard for each of us to come up with, I'll say, foreign language teacher or perhaps a higher math or science or something like that. So we're hoping with the regional or online version, it will allow schools in southwest Virginia either to share the resources that we already have or perhaps tap into some resources from other places. And again, aggravate Ms. Taylor, she's a Spanish teacher. She could get a job on the moon right now. Everybody needs Spanish teachers. So that's a gem that we have in our pocket, so to speak. But other places don't have that. So that's some of the reasoning there also. Again, possibly provide course programming. Programming not economically feasible. And by that, you may have one student or a handful of students in the whole county that want to take a particular class. Maybe it's a different kind of science, a different kind of math. We are probably not going to employ a teacher just to teach five kids. But if regionally, there's five kids in Tassau and five kids somewhere else, you know, pretty soon it becomes feasible to have a full-time employee to teach those. So that's another goal. The big thing too, and MOP, MOP's in here everywhere. I guess I should have said what that is. It's a multi-discipline operating platform. And I'll spit that out in just a second. But one of the things now is that if, like right now, there are 42 students who live in Tassau County, but they're enrolled in Radford City Schools. They don't go to Radford, they stay right in Tassau County, but they're enrolled in schools there through Virginia Virtual. And so Radford gets the dollars associated with those students, so to speak. So what we're looking at doing, if we do a regional online school, the ADM dollars would come to Tassau County. Then we would use those dollars to pay back tuition to provide the technology needed for these students. But it would allow us to keep our enrollment in Tassau County. We have been told that if we create this regional school ourselves or if we partner with an established entity such as Virginia Virtual or K-12, that the VHSL eligibility would remain. And so that would be, the VHSL is going to say, hey, we're okay with them playing, but it'll be a local board decision whether you would allow folks to stay online and play sports. And I know this year, you have graciously allowed that to happen, but that would be another discussion we would need to have this summer if the board wanted to keep that platform going. And I would think that would be, it'll be an important decision to have early in the summer so that parents can debate and decide whether they would want to go online or whether they would want to come in person. Athletics will play a key role in that. One of the things about the SOL scores, they will stay with your division if students are online. And again, that would be if we partnered with already established platform providers such as K-12 or Virginia Virtual or if we create our own regional school. And if the region creates their own regional school, we may have a student in Tassau County that doesn't have a quote-unquote "Tassau County" teacher all day long. But they would be part of the region. But their scores, good, bad or ugly, would stay with us. And so that's another component of the online school division. Now, when I referenced the students earlier that are with Virginia Virtual enrolled through Radford City Schools, not only is Radford getting those ADM dollars, but they're going to get those SOL scores. So it could be, you know, a good thing or it could be a bad thing. That's each division will see that. I guess this year, it wouldn't be terrible because there'll be no school accreditation.
Do you know if, you're talking about the SOL scores, if those kids that are online doing the virtual school, if they're still going to have to come into a school to have those SOL tests done?
Yes, sir. And it would be, it would be up. And I don't have a good answer for that. That was brought up. How that's going to work out, I don't know just yet. But yes, sir, they would have to come because as Mr. Lampard mentioned earlier.
Yeah, he said that they had to come.
Yeah, they have to be.
I didn't know if they were in this academy, that they would still have to do the same thing.
Yes, sir. That's going to be, and again, it would be, if they're Tassau County kids, they're going to come here and test somewhere. We will work that part out. But yes, sir.
Okay.
So we've talked about, you know, the need and why we're going to do it. So this budget, don't let your socks fall off looking at this budget. You've got to remember, this is 17 divisions getting together right now and maybe even divisions from other regions wanting to look at this. So this was kind of a proposed budget if we did the region school ourselves. And again, that's hiring our own teachers from Radford City all the way down through Lee County. So you can see, it's a rather large budget and includes, you know, principals, counselors, ITRTs, full-time teachers, fed teachers, part-time teachers, the administrative fees that go with it, student information system. This would be, for all intents and purposes, it's another school. And so everything that goes with the school and the requirements of schooling would still be implemented there. So when we first kind of stuck our toe in the water to talk about this, I'll be honest with you, we didn't think about ITRTs or, you know, those kind of things. So as we got with it, somebody said, well, you know, SOQ has to have this or that. So you'll see these things pop up. So as we went through this, and Ms. Mullins, you jump in anytime you want to here. Again, looking at directors and things like that, it would go through the summer. And so what we really got to kind of quickly is looking about, you know, we've got, we've talked about this long enough. We need to start doing some things. And so, you know, Ms. Mullins is going to be on the board. And so our first priority is to kind of hire an executive director. And I will say this, we're going to have a director for the region, whether we create this school ourselves or if we partner with somebody. We're still going to need a liaison person for that. We have proposals coming in and I'll share that in just a second. But you can kind of see the timeline that the director position is posted. And actually, it will be posted on our website tomorrow. But Radford City is going to be the fiscal agent for the region. So as we get applicants in, and I think Ms. Taylor, she's still here, that'll be up tomorrow. Okay. All right, so it's on our webpage. But as we get the applications, they'll be downloaded and forwarded to Radford City. And then folks like Ms. Mullins, that board will kind of go through the applications. It's not like I'll be sitting down and interviewing people. I won't. We'll collect those applications, forward them to Radford City, and then the executive board will go through the hiring process. But again, I'll say this, we're going to have a director for the region, whether it's our own creation or if we partner with another entity. So this is, and I apologize, this, I'm just merely showing the slides that we used the other night, but I can read it a little bit better to you. But this is saying, what if we partnered with Virtual Virginia, excuse me, Virtual, Virginia Virtual? You know, what else is going to happen there? In the small print at the bottom, you'll see each division is listed and there's a number associated with each division. And beside of Tassau County, you will see parentheses 379. So as I mentioned Radford, and I'm not bashing Radford, they were ahead of the game, I guess, so to speak on this. Radford accepted 42 kids from Tassau, but they also accepted kids from lots of other places across the Commonwealth. So they have, and you can see the slots available for each division. We are in parentheses, we will not be able to accept any other students other than our own. And so, and that's, so this, as far as, you know, county board supervisors or any other entity, there's not going to be any new dollars associated with it. If we were one of those other divisions that took students from another area, it very well could force their locality to have to give extra monies to them. So we're not in that situation. We will not be accepting students from Radford, Richmond, Norfolk, anywhere else. If they're students online learning, it will be all Tassau County students. If you look in the right-hand corner, this is a beginning proposal from Virginia Virtual. And it says, you know, if our region has 5,000 students to sign up, excuse me, they would charge us $2,300 per K-5 student or $2,700 per high school student. Now, the problem with that is, as you well know, our students take seven classes and not six. So they're coming up with a new calculation for that. And I think it's going to be another $500 or $600 for that class. Again, the ADM dollars would stay with us, but we would pay the tuition and we would pay for all of the, any kind of administrative fees that go with that. We would pay for any technology that would be needed for that. One of the things that will be different next year if we partner with or if we create our own, excuse me, we're not going to have the offer every six weeks for students to make a decision, are they going to be online or in person? You're pretty much at the beginning of the year, you're going to commit to in-person or online. And now what Virginia Virtual has told us is that if you start the year with Virginia Virtual and you go a six weeks or so and it's just not working out, you don't like it, you want to be in with your classmates and your peers, that's fine. You could come out and come back to Tassau County Schools, whichever one of our schools that you attend. But that kind of ends your online opportunity for the year. You couldn't go another six weeks and then go back to them. You, once you leave them, you're kind of out for the year. And that doesn't mean that the next school year, you couldn't start the process over again. But during the year, they're not interested in people coming back and forth. And conversely, we're not either. You know, we want, we want the folks that are with us to be with us and those online to be online. It just makes it easier on everyone involved. And I'm not, again, I know there will be some changes during the year for whatever circumstance, but it won't be an every-six-weeks option. Again, this is still in the negotiation phase as far as with these other entities. But we have moved forward again with the posting of the regional director. So I think once that regional director is established, that's going to help us with that person kind of taking the lead and establishing more guidelines. We still know division-wide or in each individual division, we will want to put some criteria. And I'll be real honest with you, if we have a student this year who is a virtual learner and they have struggled, they have not turned in assignments, they have not worked out, I don't know that they would be accepted into this next year. We want kids who are dedicated to this platform, but we want kids to be successful. We want kids who are dedicated to this platform, but we want kids to be successful. And so, if they are not demonstrating a capability to handle online instruction this year, probably not gonna be recommended for online instruction next year. Again, we'll look at it on a case-by-case basis, but those of us throughout the region, all of us right now have got groups of students who, for whatever reason, and I don't wanna lump everybody together, but we've got a group of students out there who not doing well. And so, we need to kinda dig down and ascertain why they're not doing well. Is it lackadaisical detail to the assignments? Is it technology issues? And I don't mean technology issues with not having a computer, I mean the actual operation and understanding how to submit assignments, how to do those things. I'll be the first to admit, online learning is hard.
It is.
It's hard on the student, it's hard on the instructor, it's hard on the parent. It's different. And obviously, the younger in age, probably the harder it is, because they haven't had those life experiences, or the overall experiences with the technology to manipulate it in a beneficial manner. So, again, wanted to share this with you. Ms. Mullins was on the call with me, she actually joined us in from Myrtle Beach, I was a little jealous about that, but, 'cause we had about a foot of snow, it seemed like, that day. But, again, I think that the primary goal of this is to help our teachers out. And so, I know, right now, everybody's doing double and triple duty, I get it, but hopefully helps on the way, and that we can get through this school year, and begin the next year, and come back to some semblance of normalcy.
And we also hope this will help our Career Technical Center, that we'll be able to work out some details there, where a student can take their classes online, but then come to the Tech Center.
Right, that's another thing.
And take classes if they want to be certified in a field there. So, we're hoping that that will even help enrollment there.
And that's one of the things, talking about the tuition aspect, obviously, if we're paying three thousand dollars for a full-time student, we're not interested in paying three thousand dollars for a student to take two or three classes. But, the goal is, if I have a student who's interested in career and technical classes, trade in industry, those kinda things, that if they wanted to be online, they could take their core classes there, but then come over to the Career and Technical Center, and to the Trade and Industry, or one of our high schools and take a business-type class or an ag-type class. So, I don't think that this is gonna hurt our Career and Technical programs at all. I think in the end-run, it'll probably end up helping them out. Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, your update.
Oh, me again, okay. For the next hour, I'd just like to share with you a few things. I'm sorry, Mr. Woodard, I had to say that. Very quickly, I know it's been a long meeting, I appreciate everybody being here. Today is day one-hundred-and-ten of school. Right now, we have fifty-nine percent of our students online, or excuse me, in-person, and forty-one percent online. I have had a cursory meeting with Mr. Eric Young, the county administrator, we began talking about budget needs for both the county and the school system. We've got a good relationship with the county board of supervisors and county administrator. And so, going into the budget process, I think everybody's like-minded, everybody's got the best interests of the students and employees at heart. So, I don't think, you know, I could be wrong, I don't wanna misspeak, I don't think it'll be a contentious budget process. I think we will work well. Obviously, we'll put up our wants and needs, and they'll tell us what their wants and needs are, and hopefully, we can meet in the middle there. But, last year was a pleasant experience with the budget, I thought we worked well together, and I look forward to continuing that relationship. Heading into the spring, you heard Mr. McGee and Mr. Brown talk about the athletics coming, Mr. Lampert talking about testing, Mr. Beavers talking about facility needs. Spring, pandemic or not, is a busy time, and this spring's gonna be no different. So, you know, it's a lot of activity, hopefully, our schools could be opening up a little bit more, getting some more students in. But, we have begun the process, you know, Governor Northam had a press conference last week, and he talked about year-round school, enhanced summer schools. And like I said, you know, Ms. Hill and I presented the re-entry plan this past summer, and part of our plan was, we extended our school year to one-hundred-and-ninety days. So, when Governor Northam talked about extending the days, you know, we kinda already did that. But, what we had not really done was enhanced our summer school. So, I've met with my staff, and we're gonna continue meeting, and hopefully, at the next meeting, we will, we may not have a final plan, but we're gonna have a little bit more information about what summer school would look like. Obviously, at the, excuse me, March meeting, we'll probably set the last day of school or thereabouts, so we'll have some ideas about when summer school could start. One of the things that we're gonna do, and I actually, I did an interview today, our summer school, we're gonna open up to everybody. Anybody that wants to come, can come, but we are gonna target some groups, and we'll use our testing data, we'll use our classroom performances, we'll send out special invitations to certain groups of students. Again, not mandatory, but we're gonna try to bring some folks in, especially at the lower levels, primarily focusing on math and reading. Doesn't mean we can't do some science, and some history, or some STEM remediation, or excuse me, enrichment-type activities, we're gonna try to do all of that. We want kids to come, bridge any learning gaps that are there, if possible, but it's summer, we wanna have some fun too. We wanna have some activities, if we can do organized PE during the days, we will. I'm hoping, against hope, that it'll be a little more open, that kids can get out on playgrounds, or tracks, or football fields, or whatever we can do. Hopefully, it'll allow kids to be kids a little bit more, but that's our goal, number one. Primary focus is to bridge any learning gaps. But, two, if we can have a little fun with the kids at the time, we'll do that as well. So, Mr. Mullins and I have had beginning talks on transportation. All the directors are working with their levels to see what exactly curriculum-wise we can put into these summer schools. Our high school summer school is gonna follow kinda the similar format, 'cause we will have students who need to do credit recovery, who needs to do expedited or remake test, retake testing for graduation requirements. So, that will kinda stay the same or similar, but if we can beef up that summer school with some more STEM-type activities, enrichment, obviously, we will do so. One of the things, of course, it starts much earlier, 'cause I'm the parent of a senior this year, so I guess I'm paying more attention too. But, you remember last summer, we were committed to have a graduation ceremony for our high school students. Obviously, that's the commitment this year as well. So, I, the region has a graduation task force, and I'm not on the executive committee, but I am a member. And so, we are starting right now to try to get ahead of the curve, and whether it's the governor, or the state superintendent, the local health department, the CDC, whoever we need to talk to, we're trying to start talking now, because we would like to get back and have as close to a traditional graduation as possible. Now, I think some of the schools last year, and I'll speak for Bluefield, I think they went to a football field and kinda liked it. So, they may not go back to a gymnasium, they may stay on a football field, and that's okay. But, we wanna get back to parents in the crowd, and kids coming across the platform, or the stage, or whatever we have. But, right now, as Mr. McGee and Mr. Brown talked to you earlier, you know, if graduation was right now, it just wouldn't be, it would, it may not be as good as what we did last year. So, we're, this graduation task force, again, we're starting to put ideas together of things that we can do. I will say that some of the things that started, or kinda came out of the pandemic last year, probably need to continue. I think people did, you know, signs everywhere, and pictures, I think all those things were wonderful, but the actual ceremony itself, I think we as superintendents, and conversely as a parent, I think we would like to get back as close as we could to traditional. No guarantees, but we're working hard on that. And again, I'll say this to my wife, if she's listening, no, we haven't set graduation date, it's a little bit out, it's coming, we will set it eventually, but not tonight. Appreciate Ms. Singleton talking about the vaccination. Again, we have got a lot of employees who have been through the first shot, or first dose, and will go through the second dose here pretty soon. We've already moved to virtual on those days. Help me out, somebody, eighteenth and nineteenth, or excuse me, eleven, twelve, eighteen, nineteen. And what we'll do, again, in the twenty-fifth, that's right, like Ms. Singleton alluded to, sometimes, not everyone, but sometimes the second dose, there's some symptoms that come with that. And so, we will be virtual, probably, if you're that day getting the vaccine, once you go get your vaccine, you go on, you know, to the house, if you have symptoms the next day, you'll stay there. You know, but again, a lot of people have no symptoms, and they can come on back to school the next day, but we will work with anyone who has symptoms, that needs to stay home, or not be in the building. Again, Dr. Sheldon's gonna get back to me on whether vaccinated employees would have to quarantine if they were exposed after that. And I think, just like to, again, thank all of our employees, maintenance guys who are here tonight, those guys are, it's amazing. Like you said, they were out yesterday plowing snow, anytime there's something, they can about fix it or do it. We've talked about facility needs, the newest school in Tazewell County is about a nineteen-eighty construction, but if you go visit any of our schools, they look brand-new. And that's our custodians and our maintenance department, so I appreciate all of them. And I will wrap it up.
Thank you, Dr. Stacy, we appreciate it. Time for board member comments. Mr. Woodard?
I only have one, and that's about employees who are getting the second dose, and going on if they have side effects, stay in there. Make sure everybody gets that. A lot of times, things are said or decided, and it's not equally distributed out through the system. And employees who aren't told that, let us know, 'cause sometimes those things slip through, and we as board members never hear that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Moore?
Yeah, I'd like to thank you, Ms. Mullins, and Ms. Whittington, for agreeing to be our chair and vice-chair. I look forward to your leadership this year, and I look forward to working with Mr. Robinson and Mr. Woodard as well. I think we're a pretty decent team, and I appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Beavers, on the Career Tech Center and the CTE programs. I'm telling you what, it makes me happy to go into the Career Tech Center, 'cause there's always something happening, and then the kids are happy to be there. Between that and the CTE programs, that's a true testament, I think, to workforce readiness. And it's nice to see when these kids walk across the stage, hopefully, at graduation, that they are walking into careers already. So, that is a blessing for them, and what an accomplishment that we offer for them. And the last thing is, I know there's a lot of frustrated people dealing with the governor's directives for sports. That's all I can say, it's a governor directive, so if you have issues, please contact him and his office, and your legislators, and hopefully, a change will be made, because these kids certainly deserve it. So, let us know.
Sign, point-blank sign of that number.
Let's do it. We'll make a poster right now.
Thank you to David Beavers and our maintenance department, who work tirelessly behind the scenes to keep our schools open. Your hard work does not go unnoticed, and I thank you for your dedication. Also, I also wish to acknowledge Cynthia Beavers, and the instructors and staff at Tazewell County Technical Center, as February is designated to highlight the importance of technical schools, their efforts shine year-round, as they prepare our students to be workforce-ready, and have a direct impact on our community's economic success. As the board has mentioned since summer, this year would be like no other. It is fluid, and we are battling new challenges as we've previously never faced. I am again asking parents to please remain patient as we work through the month of February. We understand the frustration with the amount of virtual learning days, and the disturbance of family schedules. As soon as the second round of the vaccinations have taken place, we hope to move to a more consistent schedule. As playoff season has started for many sports, I'd like to acknowledge several teams in the Eastern District. Congratulations to the Graham High School swim team, who have fourteen swimmers competing in state competition this week. Our wrestling team moved forward with two state qualifiers. The boys varsity basketball team for winning the Southwest District Championship, and moving on as number-one seed in Region Two-D tournament. And last but not least, wishing the best of luck to our varsity basketball girls team tonight, as they compete in the Region Two-D quarterfinals. I appreciate all of our coaches' hard work, as well as the leadership of athletic director Matt Dixon, in ensuring that our students have a salvageable season.
Thank you.
That's it.
Ms. Whittington?
I would just like to echo what everyone else has said about the maintenance department. We really do appreciate everything that they do to keep our buildings operational and looking great, along with the custodial staff, and also the Career and Tech Center, for all the great programs that they have going on there. It's just, there's always something happening, and just a buzz of activity, and we're extremely proud of that facility, and all that it has to offer to our students.
Thank you. And I agree with everything you all have said. We are certainly blessed in Tazewell County with some very, very good employees, excellent people, and hard workers in all areas, from central office all the way through our school system. To all ranks, thanks again to all the teachers. I know some of them are very frustrated, and Terry, my husband, has taught online for many years, and he says, online instruction is much harder than in-person. So, I hear him, and so I understand, you know, the frustration that a lot of our teachers are feeling. If they can just hang in there, you know, this has just been a challenging year for everybody in all aspects of everything. Everything's been different for everyone, stress is very high, and, but we do appreciate all that everyone is doing, teachers and all. We appreciate you greatly, because our students are number-one, and sometimes, we just have to deal with that frustration, to keep our students prioritized as number-one. But, we appreciate you, appreciate all the central office people, all the work that you all do, getting us information. And again, we don't make these guidelines for the sports, but we have to go with them, because they're handed down to us to go by, we have no choice in that matter. So, again, thanks to everyone, technology, they work very hard, a lot of them behind the scenes up here with us at night, and they work very hard every day, making sure all the online instruction goes, so thank you to everyone. Anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Motion, and second, we are adjourned.